Excellent. Alrighty, good evening. This is Tuesday, May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four. Being of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As preliminary matter, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. The ugly band T-shirt you decided to wear or anything you intend to or not screen share on your computer. Anything that you broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever. And will possibly wind up as a TikTok video to be shared amongst your neighbors and friends. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members of the board. Are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Here.
Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
Thomas Andrew.
Here.
Excellent. With a board quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty four P M. Tuesday. May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board. Which is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth. Two thousand and twenty due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open. Meeting law to have all meetings in a physically accessible. Physical location and allows us encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the platform. Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda after their concluding remarks. I will invite each board member by name to provide comments, questions, penetrating insights and or motions. Please hold all your insights until your name is called. Board members and speakers. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly. To ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait till you're yielded before. State your name before speaking. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with another board member. Please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. Alrighty.
I don't think that was really Thomas. I think it was a hacker.
What'd you say?
I don't think that was really Thomas. I think it was a hacker.
Oh. I'm Tom. Thomas is. Another board member. You referring to him?
Mm hmm. Oh, it is him. Look.
There he is.
Oh, yeah, you're risky hacker. Have you not heard of Icon?
Very clever. Do we um have a? Motion for accepting the minutes from our last meeting? Perhaps. Excellent. I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Corrections of note? No.
Oh, and notice the amendment.
So enlighten us.
I put parentheses around one of the. Acronyms.
What? You are crazy man.
Have to get right.
Is it material, Jay?
Doubtful.
Okay.
But I sent you the revised one, so that's the one we're voting on.
No, I I I do understand. I was at work until about forty five minutes ago, so sorry. Um. Do we have a second?
We do.
Okay. I'm I'm ready to vote despite. Jay's uh.
Dangling principles?
Yeah, yeah, his dangling part is simple, yes.
Alrighty, then I'll keep the vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Tom Sanford. Aye. Motion carriers unanimous. Thank you. Do we have any other mail or?
Well, I sent you some stuff from the Marlboro.
Sorry.
Being people about silox, falling upon mall and marijuana met changes to their marijuana policy. Or zoning and.
So the other email that came late?
Yep. You mean on time? Yep. You got a copy.
I think we mean just in time, actually.
Yeah, exactly.
You got a copy of an application for a special permit for an A D U in-law apartment. Someone's putting their daughter in the basement. Just have notes since we're talking about A D Us.
Mm hmm.
And there's something here. It's financial here, which I'm not qualified for, but it looks like six hundred and thirty seven dollars and fifty cents. For our share of the. Housing Consortium.
Is that the next quarter?
Says actually Town of Hudson, Department of Community Development.
Yeah, they control it.
Oh, okay. It's for. F Y twenty four Q two. Which would be.
Okay.
On January three.
I'll move that we pay the bill for six whatever. To the consortium.
Second.
Thirty seven fifty.
What was it? Six? Jay, what was it?
Thirty seven fifty. I think Kristen already signed it off. There's your signature in multiple places here. But if we vote on it, that makes it legal.
Yeah, it's gonna be paid for through us.
Right. Thank you.
And here it says. Oh, okay. Yeah, it's our share of six thousand dollars. Says quarter three on one page. It says quarter two on the other.
Is that attached to a warrant? That you were holding up?
No. It's got an email with a. Note, it's got a copy of the total and how much share, what the share is for each town. It has. Invoice for us and it has the. This form.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is.
That's a warrant.
That's a warrant. That's called a warrant? Okay.
Yep.
It's already signed by Kristen.
It doesn't mean anything.
Okay. So do I need to do anything with this or once we vote on it? No.
We, yeah, we all need to sign it and give it to June because um. It comes out of our. Our monies, the money we control that belongs to housing.
So this page that has Kristen's signature needs to have one of us on it?
Three of us.
Yeah.
Three. Uh oh. Well, by coincidence, since we're talking about signatures.
Oh, good.
The Registry of Deeds knows whether we're.
So they can distinguish you and Tom.
Yeah, you're one scribble from the other.
One of the scams that's going on is people go to the Ministry of Deeds and file a new deed for your property. In their name.
Nice.
Well, they can't be your signature.
That's the that's that's the Graceland scam, right?
Oh, yeah.
Did that happen to Graceland?
It did.
Wow.
Yeah, so somebody tried to sell Graceland uh. I'm a foreclosure underneath. Elvis's granddaughter. Wasn't successful, but you know. Yeah. You gotta give points for ambition, you know?
Wow, yeah.
But can you guys just stick your finger in the screen and?
Sure.
What are we gonna do with this?
Uh, now, um. Are you?
When I was a kid, we had a thing called the Round Robin and all the extended family would have a big package of mail.
Are you around the next couple of days, Jay?
Not tomorrow, but after that, yes.
Okay. Um, email me if I will email you some times I have. I don't mind popping up there and signing if. At the time you're around on Thursday. I'll check my work schedule when we get off the phone. I'll give you some time.
Uh, I'm just completely buried until the first. But over the weekend, you could do it.
Oh, I mean, over the weekend, I thought. You were around and I was happy to go up there and chase you down if you want. Totally up to you. And then I can take it to somebody else like Tim.
Mm hmm. Yeah, idea.
So.
Gotta chase him on a tractor which moves faster than me, so that's.
Unless you're on a horse.
No, I'll um, I'll, I'll, I'll put it on a uh. B colored drone and uh send it out to Tim in the field.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sticking it right here on the.
So anyway, if you let me know a time. Do you do you need a time on Thursday or Friday, or is just Saturday better for you?
Uh, Thursday, Friday, I'm not, just not available. I'm totally booked.
Okay.
The weekend.
All right. Just give me a time because I don't have any, I don't have anything scheduled, so give me a time. It's good for you, okay? And then I will pick it up and I will drop it around to the next person to make it easy for you, okay?
You see in my, see me and my grandson mowing Caroline's lawn, across from your church, then you can stop and say hi.
Okay. When is that? Thursday or Friday?
No, no, that's the weekend.
Oh, okay. Okay. That's fine. I mean, I can bring bring the document with you and I'll come over when you're mowing the lawn. Let me know. Okay?
Sounds like a good plan. I like that.
All right.
Okay.
We got that business taken care of.
While we didn't vote.
Oh.
Yeah.
So there was a motion to pay it. Was there a second?
Yes, there was.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, I was gonna say the Vodnystey, which is Russian for second, but. Um, I reveal my role as a hacker, so second, yes.
So uh seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford. I motion carries unanimous. Thank you. All right, so bills are paid. And. Minutes are voted on.
I wonder if that's for Q two or Q three, since one says one and one says the other. What do you think, Tim?
Let's mark they, let's mark it as Q three.
Three, okay.
Because I suspect. That's the most likely and let them come back and say, oh, you didn't pay us for Q two. Okay?
Got it.
Right, because Q two ends the end of June.
Uh, no, and and they usually build these things. Looking forward, not in retrospect, so I think.
Right.
Let's say that and then if um. That turns out to be wrong, we can certainly correct it. Okay?
Got it.
Alrighty. Is there uh any other mail or anything else we should? Address? Jay?
I don't think so.
Excellent.
We got some money. I went to the mailbox and there's money. But I gave it to Eloise.
For the former?
The A and R for one of the Inter Road A and Rs. Like the one we were asking about last time. Parenti. Member.
Right?
Yep.
So we have a scintillating agenda for tonight. And the next item is any new business. Does anybody have any new business they want to discuss?
Well, I'm looking over this thing that Jay sent from. The ci- city of Marlboro. And they're having a hearing. Uh, the Planning Board is having a public hearing Monday, June third at seven P M. In person. It looks like. It really looks like they're just. Changing some wording. Doesn't look. From the scan I've done, it doesn't look super substantial. But. That's my new business.
Which one are you reading?
So it's fifteen pages long.
On marijuana?
Yeah.
No, that one or the other one?
The one on marijuana.
The marijuana one I'm reading says notice by given of the Planning Board public hearing on May twentieth.
Yep, you're right. I was reading further down.
Okay.
So the one further down was for.
This is pretty technical. There's a lot of language in here.
There's and there's a lot of strivers.
Yeah, they're really changing a lot of stuff. Marijuana infused product. Medical.
What is a marijuana micro business?
Well, it makes ours look kind of. Timid, doesn't it? Oh.
So the meeting that's on June third for them is Donald Lynch Boulevard.
Right.
Purpose and objective of the Donald Lynch Boulevard District are to enhance land use development and encourage desired growth patterns for the benefit of public health, safety and welfare and economic. Development objectives of the city.
And that's June third?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're changing their use table.
Yeah, yeah, no, I I get it. I, yeah.
Yeah, it's a whole new bylaw, it looks like.
But it did, it did strike me that and and it's. Interesting, and I think the statement of purpose allows some leveraging of it. That the uses that were in that initial report were like every kind of spaghetti that you could throw at any kind of wall and um. You know, I think. It would be um. It'd be good to focus that to try to encourage. Some development that had um. You know, sort of a more. Synchronicity with what's around and. You know, more of the mix of. Activities. And, you know, and and retail that I think, you know, we see being more successful around us, but. It does strike me as simply opening up all of that. It's just like. Okay. Unless this is supported by a pretty significant plan to encourage particular. Activities um. As I say, it's just like. Anything you could think of. And throw it at the wall.
Yeah, and then they go on like this section here on. I two ninety visibility signage in order to enhance visibility for uses within the Donald Lynch Boulevard District from Interstate two ninety. On the north side of the interstate, a property owner may seek. Special permit approval for a sign that is coordinated for the entire district. To project above the highest line of the roof. Or to be mounted on the roof of the building. Or on one freestanding pole monument or pylon sign designed for visibility from Interstate two ninety.
And we have forty foot high L E D sign.
Jesus.
Full color.
I mean. You you put a sign up that high. And then you begin to. Risk the possibility of seeing it from. Roads in Berlin.
Sure.
Gonna be facing the other direction though.
Well, it depends. They're gonna be two sided and.
No, I think I I think that that identifies an interest of us that uh. If it's gonna be two sided, we have definite opinions. If it's gonna be one sided and only to two ninety. Then, you know, we obviously have would have some concern, but less concern it would seem to me.
Yeah, I mean.
Tim, what section is that?
Oh, wait a minute. I have to go back.
I think I found it. G.
G.
G two A, yeah.
It's further down. Let's see.
Message board signs are prohibited. No freestanding sign shall be located closer than five feet to any property line. Signs, logos or cabinets shall be externally illuminated where possible, otherwise with translucent or transparent faces. If no reasonable alternative, sign location shall be integrated with landscaping into the overall site design. And they get district gateway signage. Huh.
Externally lit there, Jay. You know what that means? You know what that means?
Maybe they don't like their own L E Ds.
No LEDs. They don't allow LEDs in Marlboro.
Oh, I was thinking it was Hudson.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it also. It also. You know, creates the issue of looms, um, you know.
Right.
That external illumination spills all all the way into the sky. Very bad.
It doesn't have to. If done correctly, it doesn't have to.
That's right.
Hmm.
Um.
This meeting is uh just next week, right?
Yeah, next Monday.
My, my boy.
Um.
So are we to take? It that the mall is included in this zoning change?
The portion of the mall that is in Marlboro.
Right.
Is included. As we talked about before. Towns can make. Independent um. Determinations as to the underlying. Uses. Outside of the the mall overlay. As we did when we put up the theaters. Um, yeah.
Hmm.
It says what they're planning to do is create. To add. A new section to create the Donald Lynch Boulevard District D L B.
Yeah.
Saw the definitions of what goes on.
Yeah, and it can't include unless we agree, it can't, it can't include land. Within Berlin and the most that we could do with. To conform to the extent that we wish. Underlying. Zoning in Berlin with what's in Marlboro.
You know, they were. Matt Bader there was. Pretty active in including us. In the conversation. But it's been radio silence um. For quite a while now.
Well, since you had that meeting with them, right?
Yeah.
Uh, may I suggest that the, and then Tim, I don't want to speak to you, but um speak for you, but uh. Would it perhaps um? Be okay to authorize Tim and I to talk to them ahead of time and to. Attend the meeting and report back representing the board, keeping in mind that we have. You know, limitations under the open meeting law. And this is coming right up.
I think it's a great idea if somebody goes.
I. I'm happy to go. I I I do think there should be a couple of us there. And. I suggested to Tim, uh uh Tim, because he'd had previous conversations with them. Just for continuity.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm available. What time is it say? Seven, huh?
Okay.
It's a good idea if Tim is available and he's willing.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I. I mean, I think we've got to. Just say we're we're listening and we want to be supportive, but. We're. We're not. It's unlikely that everything on their list would ever pass muster in. In on the Berlin side of the mall.
Mm hmm. Um, and and Tim, you and I can get, are you around this weekend?
Um, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna have, you know, a document. From Jay for you to sign. Maybe we could set aside half an hour, forty five minutes to talk about it. And uh. You know, figure out how we're going to present it, but I. You know, I get the sense that. The concerns of uh of the board are pretty consistent on this.
Yeah, and if people had a chance to. Look through it a little more in the next day or two, and if there's any other.
Yeah.
But fly.
Pass it along.
Let us know.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, do we need to vote to send you guys or?
I think I made that motion um.
I will second it.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to send two delegates to. The meeting next Monday night, June third at seven P M. The hearing, public hearing Marlboro has on Donald Lynch Boulevard. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach. Aye. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford. I motion carries unanimous. Thanks. And if we have anything, we'll uh send it along.
Yeah, that's great. And this will give us something to talk about in our next meeting, you know, in a quiet time of the year.
There you go.
Not much construction going on these days.
That's what we like to see.
Yeah, right?
I like to see anyway.
Hey, there's a housing crisis in Massachusetts.
Yeah, but construction that we would expect wasn't going to be addressing that anyway. We know that.
Yeah. Plus, we've done our part. For it sixteen percent.
Yeah. And looking for other ways to do it in ways that actually address the issue and to benefit particular interests, you know?
Right. You know, when when I look at the list. Uh, from their use table. Um. Most of it isn't. Too out of line with. What we might. Consider appropriate, I don't think.
No, I. I agree with you. I think my look at it was, you know, like. Certainly. Somewhere between two thirds and three quarters would be okay, but. My concern was. Putting out. A buffet. For developers rather than putting out a menu. Uh, that was um. More curated. Might be better for both towns, you know?
Yeah, I mean, they it drive through facilities. Narcotic detoxification facility, medical marijuana treatment. Center. Adult use mari- so marijuana sale would be allowed.
Well, that's uh one of our only areas in town that we would allow it, right?
I think we allow it in limited business.
Limited business too.
Do do we allow it? In limited and I don't think we said limited industrial, so that would be that zone.
Hmm.
I mean, that wouldn't be the end of the world if they decided to do it on their side and we did not, you know, decide enough to do it.
But I think ideally what we should be looking at are opportunities. To conform what we're doing with what they're doing, particularly on. Certain plots so that um. Yeah.
They do say.
Can the town can recognize, you know, the commercial value of the property.
Yeah, they do say. Transportation terminals and freight depots. Um, which to me is a risky.
Ah.
Um, you know.
And I mean, this is the kind of thing I think we want to talk about, Tim. Because it, one. What do you got on Whitney Road in terms of competition? Okay, and two, is that really? The kind of. If you will, high margin activity that you want to spend that land on, you know, so. I I I those are exactly the kind of things that maybe when you and I get it together over the weekend, we can make some points. To say, yeah, you know, this is everything, but. Do we want to encourage certain things and discourage certain things or even forbid certain things?
Yeah, and I think if we were to be able to go in and just say, there's just a few little things here, it's not a wholesale issue for us, it's, I mean, like data storage, telecommunication facilities, I mean, that's not the end of the world.
No, no, I think, I think that's fine, but, but I also think, you know, the message that the two towns should work together and should use whatever resources we have to try to design a cross-section that would encourage certain types of, if you will, sort of more high-margin activity, um,
Right.
as opposed to, you know, lower jump change activity.
Yep.
So I think, one, yes, we need to point out that inconsistencies and two, I'd like to see us encourage them and encourage them by saying, if you do this, we'll work with you, uh, you know, about, you know, trying to sort of, uh, raise the level of what's being designed, you know?
Right. Good.
Okay.
Awesome.
Well, unless Jay can reach into his hat and pull out some kind of rabbit, are we approaching the end of the, uh, meeting?
We have a lot of topics we could be talking about, but we haven't planned for it.
So it, it would seem as though our objective with this Donald Lynch Boulevard stuff is to be able to reflect on what Marlborough's doing, ask ourselves some questions about what we'd be comfortable with. Um, and aiming to modify the, the overlay at a town meeting in, uh, December.
Well, I think that's a good point that they can't, well, it's, it's a good, I mean, obviously they can modify.
Right.
The underlying uses in the zoning, and I don't see that they've requested us to modify in, in some way, the, the sort of collective overlay. Do you, you follow me? Cause
Right.
Um, and, and maybe that's something to talk to them about.
When we met with them, Bader, the lawyer, um, Liz Kelly, the mayor and the um, economic development manager, director, or whatever for Marlborough and said it would, if, if there could be a subset to Donald Lynch Boulevards, the, the changes they make, if there was a subset that looked at the mall as a, as an entire entity rather than a split entity, um, that it would be easier for us to go to our town meeting and ask for certain changes if they were consistent with what was going to happen in the mall side in Marlborough. Um, but in reviewing that, I think they came to the same conclusion. It wasn't, it wasn't necessary that the two be, um, you know, in, in coordination, and so that, I, that's why I think they're just, you know, moving ahead and not saying much to us about what's going on.
No, 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 and I think, you know, I think what we, I think what I'd like to see us work toward in this meeting is the approach that says it may not be legally required that we work together, but it's beneficial for the development of the land and the value of it to the two municipalities that we work together.
Yeah. The, the big I think every time we've sat down with Bader, housing ends up being one of the topics that rises to the top and when he talks about it, it, he talks about trying to bring in national players that would want sizable numbers and we've cautioned him on all the occasions we've sat down by saying it wouldn't pass in Berlin if the numbers of units was significant.
Yeah, do you know where they are in terms of their, uh, forty B percentages?
Marlborough?
Uh, yeah. I know I'm putting you on the spot.
Where can I get, I've seen that list recently.
But, cause the point I was making is if they are at six to seven percent, then I totally understand that. But it's their problem, it should be on their land.
Right, but their land is directly adjacent to ours over there. And what they, what they do affects us.
Well, and again, in terms of, um, water supply in terms of sewage and stuff like that, if they decide to do it, they have to engineer it in a way that doesn't affect us, but yes, there are other effects.
Right.
But if they get slammed with a forty B and they don't have much of a choice, we may not have much of a choice either.
Yeah, they've got a, several big projects happening in town right now, so I don't know if they were smart enough to make sure they got enough affordable units out of that.
Yeah. Well, it's something that, you know, maybe as Tim and I talk to people, you know, we could say when you suggest that, are you motivated by forty B concerns? You know, I mean, that's perfectly good to ask and will give us some intelligence on what's motivating them.
Right.
Um, they're at ten percent, ten point seven.
Oh, okay.
Good.
Yeah, so they're like barely with their nose above the water.
Yep, so if
They could still be concerned, yes.
If they're being diligent and they've got a couple of big projects coming in, like some other towns around do, they probably have a a component that's affordable, so they may bump that number.
Mm-hmm, but it does strike me as though it still may be an active concern because it's, it's, as I say, just their nose above water current like that.
Right, they want to make sure they stay there.
Yep.
Do you guys know what percentage of the mall is in Berlin versus Marlborough?
A touch more than fifty percent because the theaters jumped us, um.
Right. I think it's like fifty percent. It's very close to fifty-five, forty-five, Jay.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Yeah, we got Sears and the theater and
Yeah, Sears is closed, the theater's dead.
Is the theater dead? I thought it was still, it's still alive.
It's still around.
It's still open now.
You know what's interesting? Hudson's at ten point six. Marlborough's just at ten point seven. Northbro is at ten point where is Northbro? Ten point two eight. Huh. They're all just hanging in there. Clinton's only at seven nine. You'd think Clinton would have more.
They don't have the big, um, rental complex like everybody else has.
Bolton's at fifteen because they've just added those two big complexes, so they're they're in the same position. We, we're fifteen, six, one, they're fifteen, fifteen. And our friends in Boylston are at five.
Wow.
What, Hudson?
Hudson was ten, um.
Ten?
Yeah, ten, six. So there's I mean, Bolton, because of that new project is in the same position we are, ton of apartments, lot of credit. They'll be fine for a long time. Hudson, Northbro and Marlborough have to watch their numbers and Boylston is, uh, Boylston and Clinton are out of the line.
Right, for the picking. Clinton doesn't really have any more land. I remember when the Woodlands went in, they were talking about it being the last big developable lot.
Yeah.
In Clinton. So they're gonna struggle for some time.
Harvard's at five, Lancaster's at five. Boylston's at five, so all those towns are at five. Anyway, good. Yeah, I can't, are there other issues that we would want to push at a town meeting in the fall that we need to be considering? I
I don't know, but Jay's gonna put together the, the presentation either way.
Yeah.
Well, we talked about, um, the, any, um, stuff that came out of the diagnostics that we haven't done?
Oh, that, yeah, of course. Yeah, so actually, it may be, um, quite an episode. We may dominate most of the town meeting, um. We met with so two things. Um, Jane and Kristen and I met with a, a, a woman from EEA or whatever and um, Ann Goby, who was the senator from the western part of the county, who now is Director of Rural Affairs and, and to talk about whether we should apply for the one stop or the EEA piece. And after we finished, Jane and I communicated and, and we felt the same way we did when we met last, which was not to do the one stop, but to do the other, so. Um, she's preparing that and I, I haven't heard yet that they've sent out the announcement for proposals, so um, she was saying she was surprised it was so late and they hadn't sent anything. And then tomorrow, is it tomorrow or Thursday? Uh, so a woman named Heather, um, like Cuth, Cuthbert, Cuth, uh, anyway, Heather came um, in regard to the dam down here, um, and she wanted
Yeah, yeah.
She wanted to just have a discussion, cause Walter had said, go talk to Tim, his family was involved with the mills for a hundred years, so um, you might get some information. So she came and we talked for quite a while. And and they're, and they're gonna have a meeting Thursday that I'm gonna go to with, um, the woman who's the
So Thursday or Friday?
Thursday at
At noon?
Noon.
Cause I'm gonna be there from conservation.
So um, there's the engineer from the, that's working on the proposal. Heather will be there. You'll be there. Is, is, uh, Fred coming maybe?
Yep. Um, Fred's on the list.
Anyway, so I, I just wanted to get a sense from her as to how extensive the removal of the dam was and they don't plan to do much other than um, working on the site that water flows through now, so the far southern end, they might not touch at all. And the dam structure, as it runs along Pleasant Street, would be untouched for the majority of it, just because by doing what they need to do to the current sluice way and all that stuff, removing that, they'd end up, um, accomplishing what they needed evidently, so the engineering isn't completed, but that's, that was her interpretation. It wasn't gonna be a wholesale elimination of the whole structure, so I thought, that's good. And then she said they'd like to y- you know, have some sort of, she's interested in the history of the site, so she, she was interested in some way of having blacks or signage or whatever that would indicate what had happened there over the course of time, cause it was first built in the seventeen fifties.
Oh.
Um, and it functioned as a sawmill until the nineteen sixties, so it was quite a while.
Yeah.
And the dam is, of course, what, three hundred feet long, you know, two hundred and fifty feet long, probably, so it's
Was it a water power sawmill to the fifties? Couldn't have been.
No, um, Bonazzoli had a diesel engine. I, I don't know what my grandfather, my grandfather and his father and his father all operated for part of the time with water and, and they, we've got the patents for water wheel improvements, you know, submitted because they were fascinated, I guess, by trying to make some improvements in the generation of power for that.
Oh, I'd love to see that. My, my suspicion is that they were playing with what's called an undershot wheel where, uh, the water, instead of pouring over the top, pours along the side and out the bottom and pours things that way, but I'd love to see it.
I, yeah, and I think, I think they began to play around with tub wheels and, and moved away.
So, so almost turbines, yeah, yeah, yeah. Cool, cool indeed.
Yeah, so it, it sounded better to me than it, I mean, so essentially what'll happen is there'll be the channel. Um, lot of the time now, you don't have a pond there anymore anyway, so it, the pond would be diminished even more and um, they're still trying to determine who owns under the pond. I know the assessors when they ass, I, I think I talked to Molly about this, it was, you know, Bonazzolis were being assessed for the land around the pond that they owned and then bureaucrats run one side and Jane Sawyer and stuff, but, um, the, the land under the pond, there was no owner.
Hmm, huh.
That was recognized by the assessors. At least that's what I recall and I, 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 I should check that, but sort of, it's interesting, no man's land. Like, like Wobegon, you know?
That is interesting, cause when you look on the Assessor's map um, and click on it, it doesn't really come up as being owned by anybody.
Right.
Yeah.
So
Must be the beavers.
Yep. So that's my
Yeah. Well, speaking of the beavers, I remember, uh, a couple of decades ago, the, uh, highway department went down to break out a beaver dam and decided to, uh, go downstream of it and pull it out of the stream. And got their waiters, uh, dumped. Fortunately, nobody was was hurt, but yeah.
Which is highly illegal to do now, just so you know.
This is a while ago.
Yeah.
And if, even if you're doing it illegally, do it from upstream by all means, that.
What happens if you have a stream running through your property and the beavers make a dam and it floods your property?
So there is a device, um, trying to remember exactly. I had, I had fun a couple of summers ago with a beaver dam on, over on Car Road. Um, anyway, it's a, it's a, it's a device that they put in the pond, so I guess what when you pull apart a beaver dam, but the beavers still stay in the water, they rebuild it overnight. Because it's the sound of the flowing water that alerts them that there's something wrong. So there is a device that you can install in the water that drains the pond, but noiselessly.
Ah.
And the beavers are none the wiser. Everybody gets to live happily because even if you remove the beavers, which is, you can hire a trapper to do that. Um, but it's terrible. There, it's a cage underwater that they get trapped and basically they drown because they get caught in the trap. And the trapper has to go and check it every day till they find the drowned beavers and it's, it's terrible. Um, but, so, cause even if you remove the beavers, that's only gonna solve the problem temporarily because more will come.
That's the problem with immigration.
Right?
Mexican beavers.
So, so my sister-in-law has, um, beavers at the farm in Connecticut and they came in about twenty years ago and they gradually moved to the point where they began to block under the culvert, under the road, so
That's exactly what happened here, yeah.
Would flood.
Yep.
So they've installed one of those devices, which is named after the inventor, I guess.
Right, it's like a so-and-so flow device or something, yeah.
And, and it, so it, it accepts water from a depth that's, you know. At the, almost the base of the pond and then continues to move it like Carolyn says, so it, you don't get this noise. And, and it works.
Or you do get the noise of continuing flow.
Um.
You, you don't get the kind of noise that alerts the beavers that they need, that their dam is broken.
No, that's what I meant, that, yeah, 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 got it.
But there's a woman from Woodstock, Connecticut, who teaches at Holy Cross, that wrote a book called Beaverland, which, um.
Ah.
Is, is a lot of fun, because she, her argument is. Pre-English settlement. Um. Beavers left to run free. Did a great deal to manage flood control and water pollution and.
Totally.
And that if we would allow them to just, you know, disperse, you know, spread out back into the environment. Um, we'd do ourselves a big favor.
On, on the other hand, when Hannah was probably six or seven years old. She and I found, um, a beef bone that had been carted by the beavers from somewhere and looking for calcium.
Hmm.
Had, uh. Like send it out to the most beautiful sort of bone flute. But to me, it was evidence of the next dominant species on earth, which are carnivorous beavers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if, if you go to the Pequot Museum there at. Which one, which.
It was, so Foxwoods.
Fox, yeah, Fox.
Was the ones we, one we couldn't come up with last week.
Yeah, I, I guess, did we talk about the big beavers? I guess we talked about that, yeah, so. I mean, they were monstrous, right?
Yeah, yep.
Big as cops.
Yep.
With teeth, like.
Yeah, no thanks, that, that's all right, um, I, you know.
And pretty smart and, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, and schooled in engineering mathematics and stuff and not liberal arts like a lot of us, so.
Right?
Not far-fetched to assume they, they might become a dominant feature.
They have no education except for STEM education.
Right?
For beavers, STEM for beavers.
Yeah. Yeah, but they really are remarkable animals.
Fantastic, absolutely.
Yeah. They just, you know, build, build their houses where we don't want them to sometimes.
Mm-hmm. I'm sure we get in their way as well.
Yeah, what'd you say, Jay?
Or cut trees down in your front yard, I've a location in my front yard up at the lake, where twice they've cut a tree down.
Oh, really?
The tenant were like playing a joke on us or something, cause it was perfect, you know, like.
Perfect cone shape.
Mm-hmm. And you could see the chew marks.
Yep.
Just one night they came in and said, hey, I like this tree, and they chopped it down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Hey, we have a motion and a second, and it's non-discussable, so I'll ask you to vote. Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous.